And the first order of business, approval of the June 20th minute. Is there a motion?
Well, yes.
Seconded, approved by consensus. Any input? Nothing so far? All right. I don't think we have to wait too long there. I heard it again, so. I don't see the building inspector here. I don't see the health inspector. I don't see the fire department. I don't see the highway department. I know where the highway department is. It's on Bear Road. Tell us something about that. Police, I don't see them either, so move on to town administration. Transfer station ordinance, do we want to move on tonight or do we want to wait until today comes back?
She would probably wait till the table. I don't mind moving, but I'll move to the table over there.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Now Cory, I apologize, I'm trying to remember, I don't have the number.
93-1.
Was it 93? So, we, the select board adopted ordinance 93, 93 point dash one rather, as amended. Fuel bid, we are waiting on the school district, official word from the school district, from what I understand, they have negotiated with our current carrier, which would be Townsend Energy, which has consistently done the lowest apparently over the last several years, new price over wrap, which they don't want to disclose yet because they're not an official bid yet, so there are positive things happening. Willie Street, July 11th, we'll be meeting with Oil Tanner and Associates. Mr. Le chance will be coming over to discuss our options on Willie Street. The Willie Street call, sorry Cory.
No, we're not meeting any earlier for that. He's just coming in during the regular weekend.
Correct. Town hall repairs, Mr. Fogarty, our custodian, has another bid, he's not writing. He's told the gentleman that gave him the bid that he needed to write. The scope of work has changed slightly and the price has gone down also. We'll put it in writing. We won't worry about it. Interdepartmental employee earnings, was a fancy way of saying if someone, this was brought up last week, if someone works for the transfer station and then fills in doing work for the highway department, as much as we thought last week, it is true that they would be paid out of the funds of the department they were actually working for. This currently happens last week, or this past week, Mr. Spinney, who was a part-time helper with the highway department and a full-time firefighter, certified flagger, flagged because we had some vacation committed to the police department, he would be paid out of the, at least duty line, that's where it comes from. So we are all on the same page. Primex resolution, action required. So, you all are aware, we have changed our insurance carrier because our insurance carrier as of, in three days will no longer exist. We're switching to Primex. So Suzanne signed the form last week, before last, there were two copies that she was supposed to have signed and we had to read into the public record what she was signing and we didn't do, we didn't sign the extra copy and we didn't read into the public record. So let's read that, if you don't mind, if you'll indulge me for a moment, I will read into the public record and then you can tell me whether I'm okay with signing it. So it is, resolved to hereby accept the offer of the New Hampshire Public Risk Management Exchange, also known as Primex, to enter into its membership agreement as of the date of the adoption of this resolution and to be contractually bound to all of the terms and conditions of Primex, risk management pool membership during the term of membership. The coverage provided by Primex in any year of membership shall be as then set forth in the coverage documents of Primex. Basically, it says you need to abide by the rules of the risk pool, it's happening to sign any insurance file, including your personal one. It says, I attest to the foregoing, the true copy of the resolution of the governing board of the town of Rawlins, heard, and we'll sign. You okay with that?
Yes.
I'm okay with it. By consensus, Cory, it's already been signed once, so. Okay, so we should be all squared away with Primex. The second document that we need to sign, you recall a few weeks ago, a month ago, we've been talking about it for a week, any known claims that a town may potentially have. Caroline, Suzanne worked for the department head to make sure that it's mostly highway, police, that sort of thing, if they have any outstanding claim or potentially if they have any claims, this would be set forth here. So the two that we have, I don't think we can read them because they're both, they're both personnel issues. So, we need to certify that this is what we have, so we'll have to take a look at it. Chief, you're here, why don't we go and do that? Oh, okay, we can go back for that, that's fine. Any input? Tomorrow, you were here first?
No, I wasn't here. I just want to drop off applications for my renewal of license.
I might want to drop it off and we'll, oh, we've already handled everyone else, so. We were next on the docket, so.
I didn't know if I could nail that in, but I always drop it off every year.
Yeah. Okay, well, we're not meeting next week, just so you know, and we'll, but thank you for getting this in and the chair will.
And they usually call.
On time, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if it'll be me again this year going out or maybe someone else will come and take it, okay? We have it on record, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the record, that was Moro Cassanelli, who was the owner, I'll spell his last name for you, C-A-S-S-A-N-E-L-L-H-I, he's the owner of Dave's Auto Sales, and he's reapplying for his junkyard license, which ends on July 2. Put that with a record, we need to hold on to that so we don't lose that, because he has. Mr. Mantas.
Hi.
Do you have any community business or just here to watch?
Well, um.
You can do both, it's fine.
I kind of have both, yeah.
Okay.
With the energy committee, right?
Yeah.
I got an email saying that we were going to be spun off to do whatever we wanted because Suzanne didn't have time to devote to the committee. And the committee's been in existence for a year now.
Uh-huh.
And we haven't done anything fundamental to conserve energy.
Okay.
And I'm a little bit upset about it. The people that volunteered for the committee have apparently lost interest.
Okay.
I'm looking for the town to put up maybe $500 for the town hall and $500 for the fire station for energy conservation.
Do we have a, okay, let me back up, we've said a few things, let me just back up to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I'm not aware of Suzanne saying she was stepping, are you aware of her stepping down?
I don't remember her saying.
Okay, so, we're not aware of that, so she emailed separately, I'm not aware of it, so, so we might want to take that part up when she's back, if she.
Well, there's not, there's not going to be anybody left on the energy committee to take it up with it.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
Okay, all right, so, do you.
So is this your official, the energy committee is dissolving, or is this your.
No, but an energy, an energy committee cannot exist on its own.
Correct.
Yes.
You know, in a bubble disconnected from everything else.
Yes.
I mean, we're talking about fundamental things that were committed to, we all went to school, they told us to undertake anything that you don't intend to complete, we had the energy audit done, we got a proposal, it took far longer than it should have in February or March, and here we are now. We had two people join after the February timeframe and they come up with proposals for light bulbs to be changed and we just never had a meeting since then and, I mean, you can't get any simpler than that and you can't get that done. I can understand frustration and on my own behalf, I have other things to do if we're not going to move forward.
For context, you're talking about the Eversource packet that we got on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But we had also talked at that town meeting about going off on our own and doing a few things.
Right.
Independently, that makes sense, that you might do in your own household.
Right.
So, so Mr. England looked at the lights and he found a company that could provide us replacement fluorescents, replacement bulbs for the fluorescents or LED. Mr. Cutter said, well, those don't work. Well, I went and looked into the company information, they said, they're self-diagnostic, if the diagnosis proposes a problem, you can return it for a full refund. So it's just as simple as changing a bulb. So that's what my track is. The rest of them have kind of like sat in limbo waiting for somebody who said, go ahead and do that and a year, and this email to me that says, go ahead and do whatever you want to do and we'll do something in January, well, we're not going to hang around for six months.
I think the, I think the unfortunate reality right now is that there are a number of budgetary restraints that aren't going to allow us to move forward on the retrofit as proposed by, by Eversource. We saw some, some positive, potentially positive outcomes out of doing some of that work, but there's just, there aren't resources, to be honest, we're not going to do it right now.
All right, we understood that when Eversource was here.
Pardon?
We understood that when Eversource was here and gave the presentation.
Things have gotten a little worse, though.
Things have gotten worse.
Potentially.
Yeah, then if you don't send somebody off on a mission that you don't intend to support, because things got worse.
It is very recently, there's been some overages over on certain projects, potential overages, so, I don't want you to think that we're trying to send you on a fool's air, I don't think that's what we're trying to do, so.
I do think that and I think.
No, no, I'm sorry you feel that way, but.
But you're looking.
I don't think we're prepared this evening though to approve anything, any plans, but one, we would have to have them in writing, Suzanne would insist that they would need to be in writing, but we would, we're not in a position this evening to approve a proposal like that, though.
So are we talking next year?
I would, realistically, yes.
Okay, so there's no sense in the energy committee functioning until.
No, I wouldn't say that, I mean, trying to develop long-range plans, I think are admirable and necessary, I mean, we.
Well, we're talking a year now and a year and a half, how much longer are we going to talk long range?
Well.
Will you coming to us with numbers helps us put the budget together for next year?
Right.
So that is great, we put it in writing from the energy committee that we can put this much money towards retrofit.
I gave you numbers which would be a minimal in possible.
Correct, so there's a starting point.
Yes.
Just like everything else that we've had to do, like uniforms and everything else with the budget.
Yeah.
So we can start putting these numbers together, because.
Okay, now you've got some numbers.
Exactly.
I mean, all we can do something.
Even if you can send it by emails of the select board.
Okay, all right.
So at least in writing.
I thought my B and B would be enough. You taking a testimony?
Yes, yes. Suzanne will want to look at a proposal, you know, and she likes everything.
The proposal is light bulbs, $500.
We're not meeting next week, it's a holiday, 4th of July, but the week after, I'm sure we will.
You know, the energy people went downstairs to the fire station, I mean, to the police station, I don't know if they did or not, but they told throw away all these bulbs, we're going to get you LEDs. I keep thinking, I hope they didn't throw the bulbs away.
I can imagine, no. We're very frugal, we don't just throw things away, so, even when we want to be to, we don't sometimes, but, so we appreciate your efforts and your work on this and apparently we'll need to reappoint new members to.
Well, I don't know, you know, Susan has written to me saying, hey, we can't do anything until next year, we don't have a place to meet.
I'm going to meet you.
You know, I just want to decide whether I want to keep pulling it together or not.
Right, I understand.
We'll see.
Would you like us to send out an email on our website, looking for more people from the energy committee?
Well, they haven't resigned, they just haven't talked to me.
Oh, so they have resigned, okay. I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
No, but they were, each collective was going to get back to me when they wanted to meet, if I ever got.
Okay. Okay, so this one's good?
Sure, thank you. Anything else? I don't want to cut you off.
No, I want to hear the dog thing later, or have you done that already?
The dog thing?
Well.
We're not on any dogs yet, so.
The ordinance is on the dog waste?
Oh, we passed it.
We passed it?
The ordinance was, the ordinance hearing was last week.
I was told it was today.
No, no, it was last week, sorry.
Okay, so what's the ordinance read?
So, in a nutshell, you can read it, but in a nutshell, basically, we had some folks, or a few individuals, I guess, instead of just throwing away their dog's waste or cat's waste and with the regular garbage, they were accumulating it in a larger vessel, shall we say, in a plastic bucket, and then taking that plastic bucket and throwing it into the garbage, into the garbage compactor. It was being compacted and creating a very large mess that would ooze out and I don't want to go into too graphic details, but it was a health hazard, so we were asking folks not to collect your waste for six months at a time and then come to the transfer station, please do it in a more timely manner, so, it really became a health issue for the folks working down there, so.
I just came to see what that was all.
That was it, that was it, it was more exciting this week when I explained it to you, Peter, because there was no one here last week.
All right. Okay.
If, if there's nothing else from, from, I'm sorry, we're going to call on the department head and go back and, we're quick this evening, chief, so you're on.
I will try to keep it quick.
All right, no, you can take your time, I'm just saying, we're quicker than we thought we'd be getting to.
I have two purchases related to training. The first is purchase order number 766, made up to Police One Academy, and what I like to do is sign all the folks upstairs for some online police training. This will be a one-year contract, they're willing to waive the sign-on fee and all associated stuff, so it's 75 bucks a head, so it'll be a total of $900, and that will come out of our pro-development account.
Okay.
The, there's an issue right now in Concord as far as funding for the police academy, I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but I'm in limbo as to where the funding is going to come in the future. So they've already cut back on a number of classes, they don't do the onsite classes as much anymore, so we're kind of looking at an alternative way to get some additional training in. And, you know, 75 bucks a head is still a lot cheaper than sending someone to the police academy for a couple of days.
Right.
And the police academy does accept this training as part of their certification, so, again, it's purchase number 766, made up of Police One Academy, for the amount of $900.
So, the art program I'm feeling, chief, isn't typically one that has, something that happens when you come and you're forced with a well-thought-out, cogent plan to make up for the lack of state training. My concern is that with the overages we've had in other departments for public works projects in particular, that I think Suzanne was hoping we wouldn't have any very large expenditure, unexpected expenditures like this. Haven't by any chance had a conversation with the chair, who's not here to say yes or no, but before this evening, did you?
I have not, no.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay, do you anticipate, what was.
Professional help.
Correct.
We haven't used any of them.
We haven't used any.
Do we anticipate doing anything else this year?
We only use two of the last.
Okay. I'm not opposed to it, my concern is that, I want to make sure this isn't one of the lines that Suzanne had talked to you previously about hoping to reserve for paving culverts that we need to definitely fix.
No, no.
Isn't one of them?
There were no specific lines.
Okay.
She just said that we need to be cognizant of the Gilbridge for the contracted services. But I think between, we're going to save the long-term and the part-time account and the home time account, it should make up for the contracted services.
What's your opinion?
I'm going to accept.
I'm saying, but Cory, no, the number is, sorry.
Okay, great. Move to accept purchase order 766 to Police One Academy for 12 user licenses for a total of $900.
Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, no, I'm thinking Suzanne can dump screen it all, it's on next week, no, not next week, it's all in.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Two weeks of brief.
Yeah.
All right, what else you got?
Purchase order number 765 made up to the NEACHA, which is the New England Animal Control Humane Academy, and that's for a week-long class for the new animal control officer, took over equine laws, chicken laws, dog laws, and other animal control essentials. So it's basically a 40-hour class, and the police academy does not offer any animal control officer-type classes, so they asked her to do some research, and this is what she came up with, so again, this will come out of the pro-development account and it's $375.
Do we have our issues with chickens in town, so she will have her hands full?
We do.
We had one, so maybe you're a lucky one, our good luck charm, okay.
Move to accept purchase order 765 to NEACHA for $375 for animal control training.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, all right.
We need to keep that in the same line.
All right.
That's all that I have for you folks.
Well, we've had, we've had praise for your officers for the civilian firearm force that was offered. Email came in today, or yesterday. Did you go to it?
No, I went to a, that session, I was busy. I did a walkthrough with Lieutenant John and Norm Drew, excavating, and about your water damage, along with all the other things we were flying, and the slope of the second stall is wrong and the slope of this is wrong, and there was more issues than just water coming up through the floor, there's no drainage, it has nowhere to go and it's clay, and so everything's fixable, but I was shocked, I didn't even realize how low your ceilings were, so, so we're going to have to come back and probably do a walkthrough, all three of us would be good to see, because I didn't even, like, your boiler has that blown-out part about it, but I could have sworn, wasn't that just approved? Didn't that just pass inspection? I guess it can still run?
It's passed inspection, but I think the insurance company made a note or said something that, you know, you need to fix this sometime during your future.
Yeah, so there's a lot of issues downstairs that you guys are dealing with very kindly, but I don't want you living in those conditions. So I did not realize you did not have hot water for your shower, you know, you should not have to work your job and then wait to go home to take your shower, because there's stuff you have to do in your daily job that should not be brought home, so, so I have another company coming out and, oh, and Norm Drew and Mr. Hammond are going to do a walkthrough as well, to put their brains together and see what they can do, because everything's fixable, but.
For mon, money.
The drainage, for now, but either way, we still own this building and whether we move or not, it still has to pass inspection, it still has to meet code.
It's supposed to be saying.
It's still, right, you have an electrical box you can't even get at, so I was shocked, I'm like. So, I have another company coming out, I'm getting in touch with them, just to get a second opinion and then probably put some sort of proposal together to put bids out and then, which would go back to Mr. Mantos, which is why we're going to run a budget this year, because I don't know if these things can wait for much, so.
Some of those items that you mentioned should have been noted in the report that were done by, you know, Tanner folks.
Right, right, some of them are, and they're, or most of them are, they're in that space needs assessment with pictures, so, so yeah, so, but I'm glad I got to do a walkthrough, John did a great job explaining everything and the ventilation, where your training room is and the air conditioning that freezes up and, so.
Well, thank you. See rise this.
This Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I would be there.
George will run the board, thank you.
I think we're downstairs, we'll probably have a few of these one here.
Awesome, any other chief?
Thank you.
Good work. The other department heads and, and sneak in, all right, well, we will continue on then.
Thanks, chief.
Stamen Falls Family Fund Day Liability Insurance, we are not customers of Primex until July 1st. July 1st, they will be happy to entertain conversations about whether or not they need to do additional riders, that sort of thing, for liability insurance, but until we're customers, they want us to wait, so, fair enough. That's table until after July 1st, so, unless there's any objection. There's another action item, we, a while back, we voted as a board to have our group one members in retirement, we have to do one other thing that we didn't do, we have to, we've already moved to participate in the retirement system, but the way we do it has to be participation in the tax shelter program, which is a fancy way of saying it will be post-taxable, it will be after-tax, say.
After-tax dollars.
Right, which is counterintuitive, you would think it would be pre-tax dollars, but it is actually the opposite, so, we have to move to elect participation in an entry retirement system by group one employees, including participation in the tax shelter program so they can finish our application.
Say.
Okay, sure, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have, I think Caroline printed out, there you go, they'll all have it written, so. We have now done that and the trustees of the retirement system will be happy that we sent it in the language they wanted. Apparently, the way we adopted it wasn't clear enough for them to say that, yes, we wanted to put our group one member in, it had to be disverging. It's now done, hopefully they're not going to drag the feet anymore, so. All right, policies and procedures, we have a meeting coming up very shortly.
July 16th.
July 16th, right here, so you're all invited, those of you watching at home, watching tomorrow, whenever you're watching, and those of you here, July 16th.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM here, if you'd like to come.
We would be here.
We're going to discuss our revised personnel policy, we've been working on for at least two years, and our purchasing policy, which we've been working on for almost three years. We're this close, so please come, watch the excitement, and we may, if we get to, talk about snow removal, I wouldn't hold your breath. Access, assessing issues, we don't have any new issues, it's just a standing item that we're keeping on the, on the agenda. Compliance issues, we have a letter apparently that is forthcoming, we've been saying this for a week or two now, but apparently it's really true this time, from our new building and code enforcement officer for 18 Pine Crest Lane, you recall that was, there was an issue with setback and some.
Easement.
Work that was done near the concert, or potentially on the conservation easement, so, Mr. Clark is handling it, so. The renting of rooms on Church Street, the coordination of the, I like to call the Holy Trinity, fire, police and code enforcement slash county, that's four, it's Portet, is ongoing and no one can seem, no one has a say in date, so it's still, it's in limbo, it hasn't been forgotten, though. Rogers Auto Body is a, they're playing phone tag, so.
I wonder if you know, I think they might be.
It's not on the agenda, so, no, we can check them out. It's not in the folder, this Carolina already showed it, it's in there, so, 59 is the paving project?
Yes.
Landscaping, you can add it. Could you make a note, Cory, that a letter needs to go up for compliance issue for 59 Rawlins Road?
Yeah, they're repaid, it's small, we didn't want.
So, town admin standing item, board member activities, there was a meeting of the historical committee this past Thursday, which I was not able to attend, I apologize, although I was reminded by the chair that we still have not given them their mission statement or charge.
We give them the mission statement, oh, I thought that was already done.
I thought so, no, no, I thought so too, but, I mean, of course, what happened, so, I've asked Caroline to put on next week's agenda, next week, next time we meet when Suzanne's here, just in case we actually did do it and she had a note of it, and I don't want to recreate the wheel if we're going to, if that's okay with you, so.
Yeah.
Do you have any activities to report on?
I emailed the rec. I emailed the rec commission and committee, I have not heard back from anybody. Did you get my email? Okay, so it did go out. So I have not heard back. I asked, um, when is our next meeting, and what would like to know? Pretty much, just David.
Okay.
But no one's, no one has received, replied back yet.
Okay, well, is what it is. So there's only two of us, we've already reported, so there's no other, um, nothing else. No other board member activities that I know going on. Um, so we will move on to building permits, if that's all right with you. The first building permit will be, Cory, it will be, uh, two thousand and sixteen dash one oh one, one zero one, and it is for seven hundred and ten Main Street. And we are going to deny this permit, uh, for setback issues. This is the, um, solar array on the ground. The applicant is well aware and understands what he needs to do, so we have denied that, and that's that. Next one we have, in numerical order, I apologize, would be, if I'm going too fast, let me know, I'm sorry. Uh, twenty sixteen, uh, dash one hundred, also seven hundred and ten Main Street. This one we will, we will be, um, granted. This is for the solar array on the roof. The assessed value, estimated, uh, value of construction associated with the project is one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which, um, will give us a, um, a fee of one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. So we're happy with that. Permit is granted. I don't know if we can actually do it.
We can.
All right, are you doing it this week?
No, not at the time.
All right, we're gonna hold off on this one, only because the applicant is sitting next to me, and I don't know, I don't know if she actually technically can approve a building permit. I don't think so, but
I'm just putting in lemon and florist.
But she's done the right thing, she has a building permit, she's not doing it yet, so.
We will do it next week. You will do it next week.
All right.
We're not doing it until next month.
All right, well, I wanted to hold, I'm gonna write on it, hold until, um,
But I wanted to get it in at the time.
Seven eleven.
Eleven, thank you.
Why don't you make an offer?
Uh, it's forty-five, we will, we will hold it, so. Uh, the next one is building permit twenty sixteen dash one zero two, uh, one fifty-one Roberts Road. They are, um, same company. They are installing a roof-mounted, uh, solar, uh, system. And the permit, I haven't looked at it, but it's, it's mounted on the roof, so there's no setback issues, so. Will be, permit will be granted, it, uh, fee will be three hundred and sixty-five. Everybody's getting solar.
I gotta make a note.
Fair enough. All right, next one we have is twenty sixteen dash one zero three, hundred and six General John Sullivan Way. They are, um, installing an above-ground pool. But it doesn't seem like it's one of, it's not, it's not a very large one, it's a small one. The gentleman was putting it up himself, but listen. It's a temporary above-ground pool, oh, I don't know if it's one of those, um,
Is that beautiful?
I don't know, well, that's why
The blow-off pool?
It looks like it's larger than that, though, so I don't Twenty-two feet by fifty-two inches deep, so. It's bigger than a normal, well
They're digging into the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, so he's digging in a bit, so. He had asked for his permit, he will get his permit, it will be thirty-five-dollar fee for this one, so. He has, there's no setback issues. Double check, only double check, I don't think there's a setback issue. Like to be, we strive to be consistent, so. Control. We've got enough space. Fifteen foot setback, so, on the side and rear, so.
Double check.
Sorry to doubt myself, so we have, uh, I told you it's thirty-five dollars, according to this, adopted, a brand of rather Small pool. More than I have. Okay, next one is twenty fifteen. It says twenty fifteen dash twenty-five, so I'm not sure when. It's a copy of it, it says. Huh. Interesting. Okay, well, maybe he already did the work, but never came back and brought the form back. Put a swimming pool in, and a garage, apparently. We're gonna have Mr. Clark, our, our, our code enforcement building inspector, look at this one. This one's a little strange to me. Okay, the next one is twenty sixteen, we're going down here, I don't know. Uh, twenty sixteen dash zero nine nine, seventy-eight Woods Run. More stuff, this is for electrical. It will be ninety dollars for the fee. This is the, is the, uh, finish electrical work for the new kitchen on, um, seventy-eight Woods Run. Thank them for pulling out the permit. Okay. Next one is twenty sixteen dash zero nine six, we held this over from last week. We were wondering whether or not the individual was doing the work themselves, so we'll write in self for contract, they just felt swamped all the way. Excuse me. Fee is ninety dollars. I'm sorry, four thirty Stockdale Circle, I didn't read that, did I? In my mind, I, I didn't, thank you. Okay, and so the next one is, um, twenty sixteen dash zero eight two, it's also a hold over from last week. We didn't know who was performing the work, it's being done by the individual homeowner. Um, they were replacing some roof shingles, not all the entire roof, so thirty-five dollar fee. Hey.
Twenty-eight Silver Lake.
I didn't, just do it again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You are moving faster.
I don't know. Mine is moving faster than my mouth, which is unusual for me. If you do the other way around. All right. We have a few items that we signed this evening. Uh, I don't know why I've got your folder, but she explained it to me, so if you want to just go over, I'll go over it.
That'd be great.
All right. Um, the first item is, we're gonna hold this over for Suzanne, I want her to take a look at it. I already have a statement, especially, we're going to do it, but fair is fair, we'll wait. It's not due just yet, anyway. It's, um, the, the State Department of Revenue wants to know if we're going to continue to use the, um, inventory forms for, uh, the tax, the tax inventory forms.
Oh, yes.
Yes or no? So I'm assuming we probably are, but Suzanne likes to do a cost-benefit analysis every time we decide whether or not we're going to do this? So, um, I don't know, we'll wait till next week, if we don't mind. If you want to move. Probably the safest thing to do. We found in the past that we bring in more revenue from these than we expend in energy, um,
Do you guys know what we're talking about?
People hours.
Those inventory sheets that you get that are due even fifty?
Okay, so we're gonna hold that for review. All right, the next thing we have, which apparently needs to be in by July first, anyway, they've already filled out the form for it. The Department of Environmental Services wants to know, it is a pre-application, there's no costs associated, it's a grant with, um, for, um, that's a free, uh, the proposed, uh, scope of project is the development of an asset management plan to help the town understand the stormwater system they are currently managing. The program will focus on developing an inventory with inspection of the system and developing a rating of one to five for both condition, uh, for accounting. This will be done in the fields of GIS. So also, in the GIS would be the ability to develop information for a capital program to understand future liabilities. The asset management plan will help in meeting the MS four compliance, which is why we really wanna apply for this grant. Or it's not, I shouldn't call it grant.
It's a loan program.
Yes, so so there, there is, um, it's really washed, because it's, the scope of the service that they are, D E S is suggesting low cost. The type of work that we wanna do is thirty thousand dollars. There's, there's, the first thirty thousand dollars is forgiven, so it's not really although this is just an application to see if we wanna get on the waiting list to get onto the program.
Right, for next
For next year, so there's no costs associated. And in the end, if we say, well, you know, we're not really interested, we don't need this for our MS four compliance, we don't have to do it. Right. We don't have to do it. But if we don't put it in by July first, we won't get on the waiting list for next year. Are you okay with, with putting this in then?
One question.
Sure.
Is this the thing she asked about a couple of weeks ago, that we said we have enough on our plate?
No, this is, that was, um
Just wanted to clarify for the notes.
That was the, um, it's all water-related, but
Yeah.
It's all MS four water-related.
But I just wanted to clarify for the notes.
No, no, that was, um, um, the Seacoast, I'm not, I'm gonna butcher their acronym, the Seacoast Stormwater that's the area I'd written, that we wanted to perform.
Well, no, that was last week, but a couple of weeks ago, she had asked about something, and we said we had enough on our plate, we didn't wanna tackle that.
I think.
So
For this year.
Right, so this is next year.
This is, this is next year, this is, no, this isn't even next year, this is, take it on the waiting list for next year, which is really probably more likely two or three years down the road.
Right.
So, I need to sign something on it, if we, if we wanted to put our application.
Yeah.
So are we okay with this, then?
Yes.
We're putting the application in?
Yes, I just wanted to make it clear for the
Yes, no, it's not the, um, doesn't cause us anything, it's, um, it's a free application. To get on the waiting list, so. We may never get anything, that's to be clear, so, um.
But it's the privilege of someone.
They fill the form on four, so I'm not gonna complain too much. If I had to fill it out, I'd complain. Scribbled my signature on, I think it's only one place, so. If I only scribbled a little more, they'd never know who signed. Go after someone else. Joke for all of you watching. Can't get my mumbling on that, uh, on that microphone, that's okay. This should be good to go, um, this goes are, the New Hampshire Municipal Association would like to know if we have any suggestions for them for, uh, for, uh, future legislation for the fall, uh, for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen biennium. Would like to take a look at it, and wait for another week if not, do it for several weeks, so.
Okay.
We're good. And
Floor policies due August twelfth, policy conference is September twenty-third.
Monday.
If you have any comments or questions, send them in, so we can send it to them.
And Suzanne is, um, the other item we had was from Stratford Regional Planning Commission, we're still holding. We're still waiting to see if this is the appointment of Suzanne and J.B. Nelson
Who's dead.
To, to this, um, commissioner representing the town. We'll hold that. The Trail City, Tri-City Trailblazers had, have their, um, application, uh, application, reapplication for, um, several years ago, um, where was it? Two thousand and four? Two thousand and four. Uh, in two thousand and four, the then Board of Select, no, Select Board, um, decided to allow, um, motorized vehicles to utilize about two hundred feet? It's about two hundred feet, probably called in the conversation I had with this gentleman. Two hundred feet on Shady Lane, um, to access the private land, um, for the private trails that they have on private land, for, uh, for the members, for the general public, actually. And the Select Board apparently in two thousand and four, it's a short, no problem. So they're asking that we, um, reapprove that. I told him that we, we were gonna wait, and I wanted to have a couple of conversations with, with then-board members, just so I'm on the same page and understand what they're talking about, but my general understanding is that it's at the very end of Shady Lane, or at the beginning, depending on your perspective, in Dover, behind the hospital. There's about two hundred feet between the town-owned Shady Lane, the Classic's road there, and private property that the private property owners have allowed them to use and go trip. I don't personally, I don't, I don't have a problem continuing that relationship. I didn't know it existed personally, especially when we went through, when we had all those hearings? Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So we had all those hearings, and we kept saying, so this, the only place we're doing this is, is, let's go.
Well, they told us about those trails that went, um, by
But they didn't tell us about this part, that the, the town had allowed them to use part of remember we said there was any of the town land that we, that they used? No, and this comes up, we had to re, they, they want us to reapprove this. I don't have a problem with that few feet being used to get onto private property, which we've known about it when we had those very clean hearings. And we asked, is there anywhere else this is happening? And they said, no. And
But we had Passon, that was here too.
Oh, he was sitting here the first day, he was chairing, um, in, I don't know, whatever. Whatever. It's not the end of the world, but I was, I wanna have a conversation with him, um, and I think we'd like to have them, the, the trail folks, come in and explain it. And then, I, it's gonna be to Suzanne, because you're the chair, as to whether or not she wants to have another public hearing. I don't know if we need to, but it'll be up to her, but that's why that's important, we have an action. Everyone's on the same page. So the only other thing we have, I just wanna talk about more.
No.
The only other thing we have, uh, for this evening, is we're gonna take other public comment in just a moment. Where's mine, gentlemen? Where did I lost mine? Uh, is, we're going to, at the very end, we're just gonna go into non-public session to, and we're gonna come back out of non-public session, so you can stay here if you want. Just to discuss what's on the, um, the, the potential claims document, only because some of them have to do with personnel. We're not allowed to discuss those in public, but we do sign everything in public, so you're more than welcome to come back in the room, it should take you, um, thirty seconds, maybe, so, um, I will, um, ask for other public comments, if anyone wants to, to say anything, any questions or concerns, comments, whatever you have.
Uh, solar equal on Washington Street. Something came out in the last couple of weeks about solar arrays in Massachusetts, and that fire departments are sometimes not as quick to go into buildings with solar arrays, and I didn't know if you had heard anything about that, because they're in fear of the, like, the solar panels still collecting electricity when they're on the rooftop arrays, and that they could potentially cause harm to the firefighters in the building. to the firefighters in the building, and...
I've not heard that, but...
And, so I didn't know if our fire chief had anything about solar arrays that he had heard, or...
Next time he comes in, we can certainly ask him.
Yeah, 'cause I, I saw...
Oh, yeah, they have a purchase of that, too, too.
Uh, they have lots of solar arrays going up, so we heard.
We have lots of them, and, and, um, thank you for that. Um, when the chief comes in, we can mention it to him. Anyone else? I screwed up, hopefully I said that loud enough for the camera. Um, we have a purchase order that I neglected to, to act on, um, it's from the Cemetery Properties.
Is that the way I'm doing these, those?
Yes, thank you very much.
I'll let you do that first.
No, you're good, I can do that.
Oh, this is for mowing, um, this is purchase order seven seventy-four to Green Shadow Properties for one mowing of new in Old Town Cemetery. Um, the mowing was done on June twenty-second, it's their fourth mowing of the year, for one thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars.
Moving that?
Yes, did I say, I moved it.
Okay, so, uh, Jody's moved purchase order number seven seventy-four to Green Shadow Property, Mike seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, opposed, no, all right. Didn't hear any no's, so. That's approved, put that back in the... All right, any other public comment before we, we close out, uh, we're going to non-public session for about thirty seconds. See none? I'll entertain a motion for a non, I guess I don't wanna mention no one, so, I'll move that we go to non-public session for purchase orders discussing contract with personnel implications.
Same.
Uh, Mike, aye, wait, you get your book on this one, I had to write that on desk. Oh, you got it on there, so, Mike, aye, Jody?
Aye.
It's unanimous, we're in non-public session.